Good evening. We will now call to order the monthly school board meeting today, February 13th, 2023, for our regular meeting. Roll call, let the record show that all board members are present. We are missing Ms. Deb Hayes, so Ms. Kim Pyrick is going to help us with anything that Deb would normally help us out with. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move forward to the public comments section, information on public comments, I would like to take a moment of silence for Mr. Tom Largus, who recently passed. For those of you who are unfamiliar, Mr. Largus was a 1974 graduate, a coach since 1990, and just a Titan in Munster. Phenomenal friend to many, coach, mentor, and words can't describe what a huge loss this is for our community, for the school town. So at this time, I would like to take a moment of silence in honor of Tom Largus. Thank you very much. We will now move to Section 1.4, Public Comment Information. We currently offer two ways in which the community can participate in regular school board meetings. The first public comment, the first public comment section on the agenda is for addressing current action items that are on tonight's agenda. These comments must be submitted by noon on the day of the meeting. The procedures for submitting are posted on our website under Board of School Trustees. The second public comment section is for general comments and does not have to be specific to an agenda topic. If you wish to address the board during the general public comment section of the meeting, please put your name, address, and topic on a card and give it to Ms. Kim Pyrick at the start of the meeting. Thank you, Kim. All public comments are limited to three minutes per individual with a total of 30 minutes allotted for each public comments section on the agenda. Moving on to the individual public comments on action items, Ms. Pyrick, we do not have any, is that correct? Okay, there are no public comments on action items. Moving on to Section 3, the Consent Agenda, Mr. Trippenfeldis.
Mr. President, the Consent Agenda contains items 3.1 through and including 3.5, and I will go through those at this time. The first one is 3.1, the approval of the minutes from the last three meetings, which I will go over. The first would be the meeting of the regular school board meeting on January 9th, which the minutes are available online and viewable on the screen at this time. We also had a Board of Finance meeting during that school board meeting, so those minutes are also posted separately. And then also the minutes from the special board meeting on the 23rd of January. The accounts payable voucher is item 3.2 as presented to the board members. Item 3.3 is the approval of the payroll voucher register as presented. Item 3.4 is approval of the personnel report, including, as I won't read them all, but I'll go through them, the recommendations for employment as you see listed, the resignations as presented, along with leaves, extensions of leaves, professional development requests, and terminations. Again, available online and viewable on the screen at that time. We also have overnight field trip requests, which you'll see these overnight field trip requests for DECA, the Boys and Girls Track Team, and the Speed. With that, the administration recommends that the board approve consent to Jeddah items 3.1 through and including 3.5 as presented.
Would the board like any of those items broken down individually? All right, thank you for your recommendation, sir. At this time, I will ask for a motion and a second.
Schwartz Wolf, so moved.
Dempsey, second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion beyond the presentation? Very well then, let's move to a vote. All those in favor of passing the Consent Agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, item 4.1, donations. Is there a motion to approve donations as presented?
Schwartz Wolf, so moved. Smith, second.
There is a motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Trippenfeldis?
Keep turning that off. I'd like to show you the donations that were presented to the school district this month. The first one is from the Moms of Munster, Indiana group, for an amount of $325. That'll be applied to food service lunch for families who need assistance. The second donations are to Wilburight Middle School from Mr. Zoller, and then an anonymous donation. You'll see the one for $225, and then the one for $5,000 to Dance and Palms. And then there were donations to the high school. You'll see donations from the Booster Club for the theater and choir in the amounts of $3,304. You'll see an anonymous donation to athletics. Miriam Marcus with a $530 donation to the academic team's science Olympiad team. And then Bednrick Insurance Agency and Milton Supply donated to the robotics team.
All right, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Any questions? All right, we will now move to a vote. All those in favor of approving donations as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving to Section 4.2, fundraisers. Is there a motion to approve fundraisers as presented?
Schwartz Wolf, so moved.
Doherty, second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Trippenfeldis, discussion, please.
Yes, first, we will do Munster High School. You'll see these fundraiser requests for the, it looks like the month of February and March, for the baseball team and best buddies, and the amounts that you see projected. And then the fundraisers for Wilburight Middle School, which there's two of them for the volleyball team, and then the Wilburight Theater Company.
All right, very good, sir. There is a motion, a second, discussion. Is there any further questions on any of the fundraisers? All right then, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the fundraisers as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will now move to Section 4.3, Purchase of Corporation Vehicles from McAllister Machinery. Is there a motion to approve this purchase?
Doherty, so moved.
Dempsey, second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Begley.
These buses will be replacing two aging school buses. One is a 2007, one's a 2008. We typically like to get at least 12 years. These are 15, 16 years old. It's getting tough to replace parts with them. Also, if you notice on the first bus, it will have wheelchair lift capability, which is a capability that we like to have redundancy in corporation. And then the third one is, last year, one of our activity buses was hit and it was totaled, and this will be replacing that bus.
Very good. Are there any questions or discussion?
I just have a question. What do we do with retired buses? Where do they go?
Well, we have two options. Option one is trading them in, and we get next to nothing. And option two, what we did last year is we put them in the auction, and we actually, I could get you the exact number, but I think it was around $8,000 or $9,000 per bus, so it was much more substantial. McAllister was offering us $2,000 or $1,500 for the bus, so we did a lot better by putting them in an auction. What people did with those, I don't know. Perhaps made a camper or ferrying people to the Bears games.
We're 12 for the Partridge family, so maybe.
Wow, there you go, boy.
Thank you.
You kids don't know what that means.
Sorry, that dates me.
So that part of it, from the actual replacement of parts section, I had a question for Mr. Melby, because I think this ties in with bus replacement. This has been planned. There's a plan, kind of a roadmap, if you will, that has a schedule for these. I know Mr. Begley mentioned we try to get 12 years, but this isn't just a random purchase, like, oh hey, we need more buses today.
Correct. We try to do an analysis on, is it going to be better to keep the bus going and pay for the parts and move on? The state lets us go 12 years, and that's when they recommend that we trade out the buses, but we have a small area. We're not driving 70 miles to school or 50 miles round trip or whatnot. We're eight square miles, so it's much shorter. We have two mechanics that work very well, and they try to keep the buses as long as we can. We promise the community we're not going to just spend money. So we've actually, there are several buses that are past the 12 years that we've been tracking, and we're watching to make sure we get the most out of them.
Excellent.
The bus that was hit, we could have gotten it fixed, but after we took into account the age for the bus, and then how much it would cost to get it fixed, and they did offer the total, it was a no-brainer to go with a new bus.
Excellent. All right, any further questions or discussion? All right then, moving to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, item 4.4, Boiler Replacement, Eads Elementary School and Elliott Elementary School. Do I hear a motion and a second to approve the boiler replacement at Eads and Elliott Elementary Schools?
Dempsey, so moved.
Doherty, second.
There is a motion and a second. Mr. Begley, I think this would be you again.
Yes, these boilers are coming to the end of their lifespan, so I'm working with Jamie Lake and primary engineering to do the design of this. We do want to replace the chillers also, but looking at the amount of money we're facing in over a couple of years. So this year, we would replace the boilers at both Eads and Elliott to get them up to speed and a more efficient unit.
Understood. Any questions or discussion? I just wanted to make mention of one thing. We had discussed this during the agenda meeting. You know, first of all, from a superintendent perspective, it always made me laugh that you never thought you'd have to be an expert in boiler and chiller technology, but yet here we are again. And the replacement for these newer models are a lot more efficient, smaller, less of a footprint. You know, we were comparing to like the room size versus bringing it down to like a refrigerator size, so efficiency that way as well. All righty, all those in favor, say aye. All righty, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. On to section four point five, Munster High School, new course for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Is there a motion to approve new courses as presented?
Schwartz Wolf, so moved. Smith, second.
There's a motion and a second. We will now go to discussion. Mr. Nolan, would it be you?
We've got a lot going on here, so I think first I'll talk about.
Do you want to get in the microphone, sir? Sorry.
We've got a lot going on here. So first, I'll talk about some of the courses, and I know this is a repeat of what we've talked about in the past. Many of the changes up there, when we're talking about like Principles of Entrepreneurship, New Venture Development, Small Business Operations, those are to realign for career pathways the state is requiring. So as you guys know now, it's not just about certain classes and scores. We have to have pathways for students to earn their high school diploma for graduation. The state keeps moving these pathway buckets around, so we've got to realign some of our course codes and some of our alignment in there. So we went to our business department this fall, talked a little bit about those changes. We feel like this change kind of fits into our wheelhouse, keeps our incubator program sustainable, and so our kids can still kind of continue through that. If you scroll down a little bit more there, the other one is the Family and Consumer Science Pathway for Humane or Human and Social Services Pathway. Another pathway, this one just rolled out this year with the state, so again, it's a three-course sequence that students can complete. We felt that this was another good pathway to help students going into a wide variety of fields after high school, whether it was in social service, social work, or in hospitality work down the road. We also felt like this is a good approachable field that wasn't very math or science intensive. A lot of them require a lot of upper-level math that some of our kids aren't able to get to. If we keep going there, rest of it is, we're adding the Principles of Exercise Science Pathway because of an opportunity with some staffing. This is for our physical trainers, trainers for our sports program, so another pathway that's available to students, another opportunity for kids to get there and get involved with our athletics program. If you keep going there quickly, I think the next part is where I think we've got some questions. We're going to spend a little bit of time talking about pre-AP and some of the changes there. So you want to flip over to the PowerPoint. First, I want to, I know there's some reservations about some of the changes in alignment, and I'm not going to take all the thunder here, because it's not my thunder necessarily. I'm going to bring Tammy Doherty up in a second and introduce her, but what I want everybody to understand is we've vetted this process pretty heavily with our teachers, with our information, looking at trends, and we think this is going to be best for a wider group of students, okay? And the bottom line is, we've gone through the numbers a million times, and we can go through the numbers a million times with everyone. AP courses have to be open to our general student population, starting wherever that might be, freshman year, sophomore year, most likely junior year. Most of our AP courses have more students in them than have ever been exposed to honors. And every teacher who teaches those courses, including Tammy Doherty, who taught those courses for years, will say, the kids weren't in honors, those kids didn't get an equal opportunity to be successful in that program. So we have higher dropout rates for that and more struggles for those students. We know our AP program is vitally important for kids after high school. The success rate for students being exposed to AP curriculum and the success rate of graduating four years is just as important as dual credit. The research is there, so we know that AP is vitally important to us. We have to continue expanding our AP program. In order to meet the benchmarks the state is putting out there, we have to continue expanding our AP program. We don't really have a choice there. So again, we need to get more kids in our AP program, and we're going to continue to do that, but we're also going to continue to make sure those kids are prepared and make sure there's a lot of path options for kids to get into these AP courses and be successful. So I'm going to bring Tammy up to talk a little bit about this, and I think the important thing is the concern about honors curriculum and how that looks moving forward, how we're going to support our honors or high ability students. Tammy has done a ton of curriculum mapping this year, which has laid out some of these gaps that we need to fill. The other important thing is Tammy is licensed in high ability instruction, so this aligns with that, so I'm going to let Tammy kind of talk about some of this realignment that we're doing at the high school level here.
Thank you very much for having me this evening. So if you want to go ahead and advance the slide there.
There you go.
So the pre-advanced or the pre-AP program that we're looking to bring to School Town of Munster offers us a focus framework to increase rigor for more students. It focuses on skills that students will need to succeed, not only in AP courses, but in life post-School Town of Munster. We're currently building and working on, excuse me, we're currently building and working on a portrait of a graduate, and we know that life in this part of their lives, this chunk of their lives, is only a portion of it. So we want to make sure that our kids are as successful as possible once they leave our doors. We know that pre-AP is back mapped from AP courses. We've been mapping that process now. We've been working backwards to see what are the skills that they need to have at the highest levels, work backwards to see where we are. We've seen that we have some gaps. We have students who will take AP courses. They are not locked into only AP students. That gateway was open approximately ten years ago, and I was teaching Advanced Placement English during that time, and I can tell you that my numbers in AP skyrocketed when I first started at Munster in two thousand and seven. We had thirteen students in AP English Literature and Composition, and currently we're hovering around, well, the class is off for this year, but it'll be back next year. We hover just around the one hundred mark for students now. About eight years ago, when I was department chair, I can speak to the pre-AP success rate because we looked at honors nine and honors ten, and we knew that kids were going to take the AP classes because they were available to them. However, what we found was our general nine and ten honors courses were not rigorous enough to meet the demands of advanced placement. So we brought in springboard curriculum for grades nine and ten, and at that time, we saw the students were better prepared for advanced placement. So in some ways, we've been running pre-AP here at School Town of Munster for about a decade, and we had more and more students who were able then in the honors program get more rigorous programming. Our goal then is to be able to offer every student, because every student for School Town of Munster deserves every opportunity to be able to realize our vision, that we're a district of national distinction for every student, every child, every day, and that's what this program will do. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So if you take a look at the roadmap to change here, you'll see that the pre-AP components, they consist of course frameworks, instructional resources, assessments for learning, and high-quality professional learning. Right now, students who are in the honors program will see no less quality of rigor in their courses. If anything, we believe they're going to see more rigorous coursework. We're also going to give more students opportunities who can do college-level work, opportunities for more preparation to do that college-level work when they enter the AP courses. That's where, I think I talked to Mr. Snyder today, who is the assistant principal at the high school. We have somewhere about half of our students right now will sit for at least in one of our AP courses. When dual credit goes away for us with the Higher Learning Commission and licensing of those teachers, we anticipate those numbers will go up even higher. How are we preparing our students today for the expectations and the workload that they'll be expected to do tomorrow? We believe pre-AP is a good pathway for that. Next slide, please. So if you take a look at this table, how do we prepare for success in School Town of Munster with AP preparation, and every student can learn and grow and succeed? We look at, we want to help students be able to grow in their deeper thinking, and that rigor is not about more work or at faster pace. It's about going more in-depth, more critical thinking, more project-based learning, more inquiry-based learning. Pre-AP can help us with that. The curriculum has that embedded in there. Every student will receive grade-level coursework. For example, when we look at pre-algebra, pre-AP Algebra One, we're still following the Algebra One standards. We're going more in-depth with more project-based learning, more inquiry-based learning types of activities and assessments rather than the traditional. The acceleration is what we currently do in our honors program, but we need to add that rigor, we need to increase the rigor for all students and for our honors kids as well. So College Board espouses that every student deserves the opportunity to know how much they can grow, and that's why the College Board created the pre-AP courses as grade-level instruction designed to build the critical thinking skills students will need to succeed in AP courses, college, and future careers, which is for the high school and high school courses what our goals are. They align with the goals of meeting the needs for students that once they walk past this door. Our goals are not to prepare them for high school, our goals are to prepare them for life after high school, which also then coincides with our portrait of a graduate. Our implementation that we're looking to do at this time, you'll see all the honors courses that are currently listed for the high school, except for the upper maths, which will probably go into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We have honors Algebra One, Geometry, Biology. Honors English Nine, English Ten, and Honors Chemistry will move into the pre-AP realm at this time, and we're adding a whole new course that's called pre-AP World History and Geography. So students who are taking regular ancient history and modern world history, they can take the pre-AP in lieu of those for the graduation requirements for the diploma. And I think that's the end of the script. Do you have any questions for me?
So if we have students that are, sorry, if we have students that are working, say, at the ninety-eight percentile, and I'm not judging any of this, I've had kids at all the levels, so, and one that had to drop out because of, you know, the rigor was too much because he didn't have the pre-stuff, so I appreciate that you're doing that. They needed it earlier. But if you have someone who's at the ninety-eight percentile, I think I'm just going to be real honest, I think that some of the parents are worried. Are you dumbing this down? Are these kids not the high-achieving kids, ninety-eight percentile kids, are they not going to get the same education if you're having the kids at the fiftieth percentile in some of these classes? How do you, how does the, are they all going to be in the same class, and how are they going to manage that? How is the teacher going to individualize that and give everybody the perspective of being the best that they can be?
Well, I think it's even tougher when we have kids at the eighty percentile, plus kids at twenty-four. We already have a wide range of kids in our honors programs because there's a multiple tracks to get into the high ability program. So we already have kids in there at the seventy-fifth percentile on certain tests and the ninety-ninth percentile. Say that the curriculum is going to change because we're opening more opportunities for students to be in pre-AP and applying that. I don't see how that works out, and it doesn't happen any in our AP.
Yeah, I would.
Those courses right there, sixty to eighty percent of those, right now eighty percent of our kids in honors bio this year were never in our honors program. We had the highest pass rate we've ever had in the history of the School Town of Munster with our honors program this year. So we've got kids in those programs.
And the students that have been at a ninety-fifth percentile or higher on their NWA math or qualified for their COGAT in second or fifth grade, they typically, if they chose to, were grade-accelerated at least one grade. So some of our kiddos that are knocking it out of the park in math were, for example, we have nineteen seventh graders that are currently in algebra that will now take geometry next year. So there are two levels accelerated. So a lot of the kids, when we talk about that ninety-fifth and the ninetieth percentile for NWA or qualified through COGAT, they've already been grade-accelerated. So a lot of this won't apply to them. It's to, this will apply to more kids who can do the work, because we sometimes forget about maturity, right? If we, as we mature, we're able to focus more, be able, we do better comprehension, so if we give them the opportunities to now thrive in an environment that will make them successful for AP, it's the right thing to do.
I guess I'd like to add one last thing. As a teacher who, I taught advanced placement, and I taught it for eleven years at School Town of Munster and probably half of my career, and I taught kids that were ninety-ninth percentile, and I actually had taught some that wanted to challenge themselves because the grades didn't matter to them, and they were at the twenty-fifth, thirtieth percentile. A good teacher will differentiate the curriculum to meet the kids' needs, and the acceleration that's already happened with the grade acceleration will not change anything. So students at the ninety-ninth percentile are going to get everything that they need. In some ways, their rigor will improve for them, because if we're talking about rigor being depth of knowledge and depth of understanding and diving more deeply into topics, they're probably going to get more rigor than they've had in the past. So we're looking at preparing our kids, again, the high school is the short term, but the long term that we're looking for is that those kids can be competitive not only in the college level, but in a world of new technology that we haven't even seen yet, and we believe that that's a world of collaboration, of deep thinking, critical thinking skills, projects, just working together in a collaborative setting. So those are the challenges we're going to offer to School Town of Munster ninety-ninth percentile kids, but also to the ones at the eighty-fifth, the seventieth, and anybody else who wants to challenge themselves. We believe at School Town of Munster that every kid has the right to determine their potential and to reach their potential, and we're going to help them reach it.
I just think people needed to hear that because those are the questions and concerns we've been getting. I wasn't judging.
No, I understand, absolutely.
No, I appreciate that. I think that's what people needed to hear, so thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions this evening I can help you with?
Tammy, are there any changes needed with respect to teacher staffing with these proposed changes at all?
Morgan may be able to answer that more.
I don't think so, not at this point in time.
Right now, we have the honors teachers, and so they'll take over at the pre-AP curriculum. We're getting numbers in now, so it may be that the, what sections of what people will be teaching may change, but as of right now, we're talking about additional staff, because it's still the same number of students that we have.
Mr. Nolan or Ms. Doherty, could either of you talk about the professional development that'll take place for our staff who will be teaching the pre-AP courses?
Absolutely. The College Board requires that if you use their pre-AP designation, you have to go through training with them. So this summer or through their own modules, they have training that's meant to help teachers with this so that they're not just thrown to the wolves, so it's required to have it. They also will have to create a syllabus that will be approved through College Board to meet their rigor. And also, we have staffing here with, under Mrs. Bergren, instructional coaches. We have high ability teachers in the district who also provide support with those initiatives.
So mine is more of a comment about this. I think one of the concerns, kind of to springboard off of what Dr. Schwartz Wolf was saying, is, you know, we face this as board members, administrators, even you as teachers. Why wasn't I told of? This is the first I'm hearing of this. So when did you guys just decide overnight to just throw pre-AP out there? Like, this is madness. But you're talking about eleven years of experience, of the classroom, of, you know, our administrators, our building administrators, you know, in some cases, were teachers, came through the ranks, and are now running these buildings, and seeing a need, a legitimate need for this. So it's not, it's not just a fly-by-night idea, or we're just going to change the name because we think it sounds cooler.
Absolutely.
College Board just recently rolled this program out. It's only been active the last couple of years. Started exploring it actually last year.
So we've been, what's kind of some happening is why it might feel like it's suddenly now is because we're looking at the Higher Learning Commission is determined that by twenty-twenty-five, teachers without master's degrees will not be able to teach dual credit courses. So whereas before we'd had AP have a significant number of students, dual credit has taken some of that, and then we anticipate in a couple of years there will be more. So we're trying to get ahead of this curve now, rather than in two years, see this big influx of students in AP and not being as prepared for those courses as possible. The second part is, we have been working with the pre-AP for years now. It's always come down to, part of it is with experience, some of it was staffing, some of it was having a leader in the building. I think Mr. Nolan has been very, what's the word I'm trying to say?
Nice.
Nice. No. He's been trying to have a lot of foresight into the future of where students at School Town of Munster, at Munster High School, will end up, what will be their outcomes when they leave Munster High School. And so we've been having these conversations for a couple of years now, so please be rest assured this isn't a fly-by-night moment or, you know, just a sudden moment. It's one that we've talked about quite a bit, and we've talked about it at multiple levels and with multiple teachers as well.
But I definitely get that sense also that you're very passionate about, it's very important to you. And I think one other point I want to make that I'm not sure that people understand is, you mentioned working with the College Board. There are standards. I mean, it's the same thing with dual credit, and I don't mean to kind of conflate the two because I know that might be going away, but there are standards set by these colleges and universities. You have to follow these standards that they set. It's not AP, well, I'm going to teach it this way. It's like, there is an actual way that, there's an expectation, so it's also, I think, answering those expectations from College Board and other colleges and universities.
The great thing about it is not that we're dictated by an outside source, but they provide us with a network, a relationship for our teachers, so they're not isolated, they feel like they're vested across the country in providing high-quality, rigorous instruction.
in providing high-quality rigorous instruction. So it's updated, it's refreshed, the, those materials are out there, students are exposed to better materials in a lot of ways in college board and materials, again, that are all.
I would also like to state, one of the advantages of pre-AP and going through the official program is our teachers will have access to quite a few resources that we did not have access to beforehand, which includes performance tasks that they'll have to complete, assessments, practice assessments. There's not a test at the end of it, like there is on the AP exam, but for the pre-AP, they are just exposed to and provided many more resources and supports for that rigorous advanced um at teaching and learning that we're, we want to get from our students. Absolutely.
Sorry, my microphone wasn't on. Um, so in terms of the teachers, that you'll have obviously a large group of teachers that have never taught pre-AP or AP or something similar, they're teaching something similar now, as you mentioned, for the last ten years. So you'll be rolling out education for all of them as well. And then I know at one point there was some concern that we didn't have enough teachers teaching AP at some point, no? Okay, so we'll go through this educational process of all of our staff, counselors, I'm assuming, and then this will be rolled out to all the students this spring, obviously, because they're signing up for classes?
Correct, that's correct.
And somehow this will all be communicated out in some succinct manner, I, it's a lot.
It, it is quite a bit, but we've been trying to take it um in increments rather than one big rollout. We've been talking with our staff about it and, and we started these conversations clear back last, I think, and Boyan was included in them as well, clear back in, I think, August, September, and we were talking about, we've had many of the conversations behind the scenes of, and with Mrs. Bergren, of how do we roll this out so that it, it tries to advantage as many students as possible, teachers as much as possible, and, and provide as much communication to parents as possible. So the pieces have been working together, and when it finally does come out in the final package, I, I suppose Mr. Nolan can, can speak to that, I, I can't speak to that.
And it, I, and before, more before you provide a response, but I'd also like to mention, our honors pathway at the high school is, is, has been, and it's written in the high ability handbook, it's based on that the student can self-advocate to be placed into courses regardless of their score. So when you get to that ninth grade level, again, we go back to a, an AP or a um COGAT potential of, right, or a NWA percentile, isn't necessarily going to define a student's success in a rigorous course. So they have been self-advocating, so now it's just the more information about what the courses are comprised of.
The way I look at it is that students have been self-advocating by taking advanced placement courses for, I think, since the state of Indiana took away the gateway and said that any student can take AP, and that's been for over ten years now. We're trying to find better ways to make more students prepared for those courses when they get ready to take them. And they will meet the challenge of the rigor. I believe there's a saying that goes out there, Mr. Nolan showed us um for our professional development last year, that if you always keep the bar lower for students, by the end of the year, the students will be at the low end of the bar. But if you raise the bar for the students, and I can attest this for myself in, in teaching the advanced placement kids, when you raise the bar, everybody goes up. It doesn't mean everybody's at the exact same level at the end, but they all rise up. And that's what I truly believe is important for School Town of Munster and helping students to realize those goals. When you're talking between somewhere around eighty-five to ninety-something percent of our students are going to go to a four-year institution when they leave us, the question I have is, how are we best preparing those students for the rigor and those challenges that they will face? I believe the pre-AP program will help close up some of those gaps that we may have been having up till now.
All right, are there any more questions, comments? All right, being none, we'll now move to a vote. Thank you very much, Ms. Doherty, Mr. Nolan, appreciate that. Uh, we'll now move to a vote, all those in favor of adopt, of approving Munster High School new courses for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school years presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move to section four point six, Munster High School Course Selection Guide twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, do I hear a motion to approve MHS course selection as presented?
Schwartz Wolf, so moved.
Doherty's second.
There's a motion and a second, we will move to discussion, uh, Mr. Nolan?
Yeah, this is just the formal document that will be published out there, uh, kind of what we were working off is a, just the changes in the draft mode. So this includes all of the changes um for, for the course guide selection for the school year, or next school year, sorry. Selection of classes this year for next school year.
Understood, thank you very much, uh, any questions, comments? Very good, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now move to item four point seven, resolution number eight forty-eight, teacher supplemental payment. Uh, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve resolution number eight four eight, teacher supplemental payment as presented.
Doherty's so moved.
Smith's second.
There is a motion and a second, uh, moving to discussion.
Uh, Mr. Heller, I'll take this if that's okay with you. Uh, I will address this with items C through E first, as you see a list on there, C, uh, D and E, are what we've done, we mentioned the AP program, we've done this now for the last two years for AP dual credit or elementary teachers who earn a master's in math, reading, literacy, was part of Indiana code. And it was, we get, we were allowed freedom to do that for some of those positions, which that is. Indiana code has changed, so we can add some things, we're still working on a few things we might add in the future. But one thing we saw was a perfect uh idea was obviously AMB. We had a um, a T, a teacher, SLP leave us uh for a different type of position, and they were serving a certain role in the district uh for assistive technology. Uh, so we need that role to be filled by people who are here, and there's really no way through collective bargaining to do that. But now that we have supplemental pay, we can issue these as additional stipends for those individuals at the time. So you see AMB, if we're going to be one person, uh, losing my voice here, uh, speech and language pathologist, and then one for any uh teacher that'll be six twenty-five who wants to do that for curricular needs. So again, C through E are the same thing we've done as a board for the last two years, and then AMB are new for this one position. We hope that that could be possibly addressed in different ways next year, but obviously we had a situation where the new law change was a wonderful application right here to be able to do something like that, so.
Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll now move to a vote, all those in favor to approve resolution number eight four eight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, there, uh, motion carries. Uh, moving on to section five, are there any items that may properly come before the board?
There are not, thank you.
Understood. All right, section six, general information and discussion, item six point one, course updates and changes at Wilbur Wright Middle School, uh, Mr. Jovanovic.
Thank you. Um. I'll just go through the courses here, I thought it might be on the TV, maybe not. Okay, so I'll just, I'm not going to read it word for word. Um, one of the changes that we have is our social studies, our sixth grade social studies course, uh, because of some s, uh, changes at the state level, um, they have mandated civics uh for our middle school. So in sixth grade, our sixth graders will take one semester of social studies and then one semester of civics, that'll be first and second semester. Uh, a few of the other changes, uh, you'll see on there are our pre-AP courses to uh make sure we're mirroring what the high school is doing. So our pre-AP algebra will be replacing what we used to have, which is uh honors algebra one. Pre-AP geometry and statistics, replacing honors geometry, and pre-AP biology, replacing honors biology. Um, we also have a couple of course name changes, um, and these are truly just done for clarification and to more align with our state standards. So we had a couple of state standards change, so FACS, family and consumer sciences, will be FACS life skills. Um, because of some of the changes, it has really shifted to more of a life skills class. We also have um middle-level computer science, so middle-level computer science um is a bit of a, a tough thing for kid, a kid to read or even um a parent to, to see and understand exactly what's going on, also because of some of our uh changes and standards. It's really a quote coding and web design course, so we are changing that to computer coding and web design. It's pretty straightforward. And then we also have one there, a potential remover, removal of course. Um, and this is still um based on student need, student data that we are still collecting, and that is our sixth grade advanced math. Um, and Ms. Bergren is helping us in that process, um, as we kind of look at whether we need that course or whether we can um put it in our sixth grade honors. So um I know Colleen wanted to say a few things about that course and kind of the process that we're going through.
So every time we plan our curriculum map, we start with the highest level course in mind. So for, for us, we want our students who want to pursue either a, a career or degree in strong mathematics to have the ability to take calculus BC. What we're seeing is currently in calculus BC this year is about twenty-four kids enrolled. However, between our honors and advanced courses at the eighth, seventh and sixth grade level, I would say that we're see, there's like a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty kids enrolled in these classes. So we're, the get, somewhere, we're not getting them to where we want them to be, but they have the potential. So we're trying to backwards design, how can we make that happen? Our current fifth graders, um, hundred and sixty-two fifth graders, so all three schools, we have about three hundred and two, I want to say, a hundred and sixty-two are at a RIT score, an NWA RIT score that gives them a point eight-three probability of passing the sixth grade tests right now. So if over half the kids probably take the sixth grade tests and be successful, advanced course may not be something we need. They may be ready to be successful in an accelerated math class if they're not already. So we, we really want the schedule to reflect what our student need is versus just a strict pathways that we have to abide by, make it a little bit more fluid. Again, I always go back to that maturity piece from, you know, we're identified for high ability in second grade and fifth grade. An eighth grader and a fifth grader are two completely different people usually in their, their course of learning. So we, we just want to make sure that what we can offer to our students is, is flexible, it's really based on need. The advanced courses at the sixth, seventh and eighth grade level were really one grade level of content ahead, um, but maybe not all the content was covered, right? They may had to fill some gaps from the previous year that the student get, didn't get. We've also talked about how we can develop a summer kind of jumpstart and a online learning opportunity throughout the summer for those kids who really do want to accelerate in math, but maybe weren't given the opportunity in fifth grade or fourth grade or whatever it may have been. If they can complete the lessons provided to them and they attend the jumpstart or they take an assessment, we haven't mapped it all the way out yet, but we want to give them the opportunity. So we're, one of our goals is also to be very inclusive to our rigorous curriculum if they choose to be part of it. And a lot of times, our parents are so supportive, they help their students in being successful.
You said there were only twenty-four in calc BC, what about calc AB? Because I think that.
Twenty-four.
Oh, so total forty-eight, okay. Yep.
Another, again, honors bio, because of um scheduling conflicts, we don't, we weren't able to always get as many kids in honors bio as many as um algebra one honors. Um, so I think there's thirty-nine in honors bio this year, where there is like a hundred and three taking AP biology. So if, by adjusting some of the courses and allowing for more kids who can be successful in the eleventh grade, start that foundation in the middle school, that's something that we would be excited to do.
Thank you.
So we heard this long presentation from the high school side, and now we're going to have to address this from the middle school perspective. So this isn't just like, well, hey, top, this is what we're doing, we're forcing your hand. Um, again, hearing the presentation, hearing everybody speak about it, it's a holistic approach and you guys are all working together. So you weren't in the dark about this, you weren't like, hey, by the way, dude, pre-AP, so go figure it out. Um, you know, the, the director of curriculum instruction is working with the building principals and the high school principal and the middle school principal are working together, so this is a really collaborative effort. And I just, I just want to say that out loud and publicly, like, I see, I hear it, I hear the passion in your guys' voices because you're, you're trying to make a better opportunity for students and try to figure out a way to, to accomplish this. And, and you know, like you were saying, if those are the numbers, like, how do we, how do we figure this out? How do we, how do we make these numbers? Thank you, get these numbers where we need them to be, so. I know we're not voting on this tonight, but, you know, via that presentation, I just want to make that comment.
And I did, I did want to comment, we'll get that document that Mr. Boyan, Mr. Jovanovic was talking about. Mrs. Hayes isn't here, but we'll get that on there either tonight after the meeting or first thing tomorrow morning, so it'll be available.
That'll be.
It was missing from there.
We have, it'll be on board docs publicly?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just also, if I could, just wanted to say that obviously part of this is the high ability question, right? This entire K through twelve kind of high ability work, there's a committee that has been doing that work and is continuing to do that work to make decisions about things like, what is the appropriate percentile cut score for second grade, for fifth grade, for looking at the middle school? So some of that work is ongoing. Um, could the high, could the middle school move forward without the pre-AP designation? We would be able to figure it out. Um, it certainly aligns for those middle school kids who are taking high school credit courses to be taking the same high school credit course that the high school students are being offered. Um, those cut score decisions and some of the things that happen for middle school and even the elementary, some of that needs to be figured out still with the high ability committee, and that's a committee with teachers that are involved in making decisions about where do we believe that line is for students to have their best opportunity to be successful. Um, that line is probably different in middle school than it is in high school, um, because of the maturity component. There is a component of a sixth grade student, even if they're at the eighty-fifth percentile, it doesn't necessarily always mean that they're going to be successful at, at challenging coursework because the maturity factor is part of that equation as well.
I want, I, our kids who are truly gifted, we're currently, we're grade accelerating. That doesn't mean that we're fostering their potential for achievement, if that makes sense, right? If I'm, if I'm truly gifted in math and I have quantitative reasoning uh percent, in the ninety-eight percentile and quantitative reasoning and COGAT, that doesn't mean I'm doing seventh grade math at the right level. But what we often see is they score higher in these younger grades, and as they get older, their eight, their um, like, their quantitative reasoning will start to drop because we are not fostering that gifted potential. So um, objects, um, to do collaboration, a lot, we talk a lot about critical thinking, explaining their thinking. I think that's one of the reasons why we're so successful at the elementary school in math is because our everyday math program, and our elementary principals can attest this, requires them to explain their thinking. But when you have a student who's naturally gifted at math, it's very difficult for them to explain their thinking. And so as the content continues to become more difficult, they have, they'll run into more challenges in being able to explain their thinking because they just do it, it's a, it's a whole nother way of thinking, so.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, thank you all very much, that was extremely informative. Uh, moving on to section seven point one, the Director of Financial Operations Report, Mr. Melby.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Castro, I did want to follow up a little bit, as you recall, during the budget season, we also had a bus replacement plan at that time where we track every single bus throughout its lifetime too. And I know you knew that, but I wanted to make sure I hit that. Uh, there's nothing really out of the ordinary in any of these months, but I do want to review some of the things that we do. Uh, the first thing is, we did increase our cash balance in the education fund, and remember, that is something we expect to do every month, unless it's a three-pay month. Our three-pay months uh this year are in March and September, uh, so that will be handled accordingly. Uh, I also want you to notice the transfer from the education to the operations fund. Uh, when you track that all the way through, and again, we will adjust that come the end of the year, but we will make sure we come underneath the fifteen percent that we're supposed to be hitting. Um, so that's the other thing, and you can see approximately where the basic grant is now. That number holds true until approximately May and June where they start adjusting the number depending on your February ADM. So that's the education fund, and the operations fund, this is a little bit different, it's a tax-bearing fund. So remember, we don't really receive our tax draw until June. Now, you'll see in there that we did put money coming in in May, but that's an early tax draw, which we ask for every year to, to help mitigate some of the costs. Those numbers are uh estimates, sometimes we get more in May and sometimes we get less in May, but we can handle it. But with the information that we know, again, we will not need a tax anticipated warrant uh for twenty-twenty-three. Um, you also notice the transfer in from the education fund is the same that we transfer out, uh, excuse me, into the operations fund is the same that we transferred out. The other thing I want you to notice in, in maintenance and repair, those are some very high numbers, but remember, we had encumbrances from years past, uh, from last year, excuse me, actually, one from even the year prior to that. Uh, some of our supplies have come in slower, so uh those numbers, sometimes we have to kick it down and move it to March. So those numbers, sometimes we have to kick it down and move it to March if it doesn't come in in February. In the referendum fund, again, really the number that I want to point out, so in our tax bearing funds, we will lose in our cash balance every month until hopefully May and June, and then again in November and December. That's because, again, that's when we receive our tax draw. The thing that's different here, we have a very large decrease in our cash balance in the referendum fund. That is because we are the one-time hit of our insurance property liability insurance. So that's a one-time cost for the entire year, we pay it every January, so that's going to be a large cost every single year. To the board's point, you're always having us track everything to make sure we're as educated as we can. Two of the things that have come out over the last couple of years, our insurance, property liability insurance, from 2020 to 2021, it went up over 18%. From 2021 to 2022, it went up another approximately 8%. So those are large increases that we're going to talk about. We already know what it went up this year, which was another 11%. A large portion of that, as we've talked before, is because of cybersecurity. So that's an interesting number. The other one, as Mr. Castro has mentioned many times in past years, are utility costs. So from 2020 to 2021, it increased over 23%, almost 24%. And from 2021 to 2022, it increased another 9.46%. So almost 10% there. So we are taking those numbers into account, we're building a model that's going to make sure we're budgeting enough moving forward. So those are some of the highlights that I wanted to bring to you without any questions. That's my financial report.
Mr. Melby, can you also address that we have the State Board of Accounts doing their audit right now?
Correct. We do have the State Board of Accounts. Every, it's supposed to be approximately every two years. With COVID, things change and it's a little bit out of whack the cycle. We should be done with that by the end of this week with the, the meeting at the end, by the end of this month, and we'll see how it goes. But I know our people back there, my office, Jessica, Linda in the past, Jen, Dawn have done an amazing job. So I want to thank them every day.
I wanted to thank them too because I know they're doing a lot of extra work right now, trying to do their jobs as well as then getting the information for the State Board of Accounts. But if you hear they're here, that is a normal audit that they do. It's nothing wrong, just they're here checking, making sure everything is.
Usually every two years, yes.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions or discussion for Mr. Melby? All right then, moving on to administrative reports, Assistant Superintendent's Report, Mrs. Berger.
I talked a lot tonight, so I'll be brief for, I just wanted to share that our.
Half day for professional learning last Wednesday, the eighth, was a success. The principals designed PD at their buildings based on what their staff needs were. The high school focused on their professional learning communities implementation and then also their cross-curricular work that they did in January in presenting. The middle school had four teachers volunteer to do breakout sessions based on something they felt that was a need for the staff and something that they had a positive experience with. And then the elementary, each elementary school, same premise of planning, but some went a little bit deeper into specific smekins and utilizing the playbook to do curriculum, some focused more on I-Learn coming up, just in the type of assessment it was and how to proctor it for the students. And really, the best time was used for that collaboration and planning because it's not every day that the elementary teachers get a common plan time to plan together at each grade level. So that's about it.
Mr. Trippenfeldus.
Thank you. Hopefully I'll get through the first part. I did want to acknowledge Mr. Largus. Tom, I started here in 1992 and Tom was my mentor in the, actually as a baseball coach. He was the JV coach when I came and volunteered as an assistant baseball coach. He moved from a mentor to a colleague to a friend. So, sorry about that. But just want to say that he supported the Schooltown of Munster with all his heart, all his heart. And he donated more time than any probably person in the room because most of the times he's out there coaching football, he wasn't getting paid. He was out there just because he wanted to be with the kids. And you always saw him on one of the sleds, right? So I just want to say thank you to him, thank you to his family. And he did list a couple donations. In his name, I would like for some of people to give honors to him with those donations and just want to say thank you. And this is not a fun job, but that's, you're a better person if you knew Tom Largus. On top of that, I just wanted to mention, back to myself, again, I apologize. We have been working with Munster Police Department with school safety. We just finished our third tabletop exercise with the Town of Munster, including EMS, fire, parks, town management with the police, and we did three, three real nice jobs. I want to give exceptional thank yous to Sergeant Koen Schmidt from the Munster PD who put together some wonderful training exercises for our principals. And for Mr. Begley and Mrs. Pyrick and I, we were all able to participate in those, so kudos to that. And I do want to walk down memory lane once more since Tom was here. Tammy mentioned it, but when we switched to opening up all of A.P. to any student at the high school, I was the principal, and let me tell you how skeptical I was and a lot of other people were. And I will tell you that you can go back and track the record because when we do something, we do it right. And our passing rates went up, number of kids went up, and I was standing with all of the people in the state of Indiana down in the governor's office because of how well we were doing because we were one of the highest performing schools in the state on the A.P. exam. And the simple answer is because our teachers were ready, just like they will be for this, our kids were ready, and we've got good people. So that's the same type of thing. We've been growing with this for a long time. And the one thing I'm most proud of is the A.P. program and the pre-A.P. is probably going to make it even better. So just want to acknowledge that and I'm sorry I talked too much. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trippenfeldus. Moving on to the Director of Exceptional Achieves Report, Mrs. Switkiewicz.
I just want to take a moment to highlight the IDEA group, which is the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Group that Mr. Ivanovich leads for our district. We had the opportunity to take eight students from the Schooltown of Munster to the Munster Chamber, Chamber of Commerce luncheon last week where Kara Herring, who is the Chief Equity Officer for the state of Indiana, came and spoke and had an opportunity to interact with our students. I can say that all of our students acted with poise and dignity and were just, they impressed everybody at that luncheon with how well they spoke, their eloquence, and just made us all very proud. So I just want to highlight Ava Adam, Asha Patel, Patrick Sabat, Kirsten Sanguiza, Gregory Ramos, all from Munster High School, and Amelie Adam, Isla Utterback, and Olivia Whiting, also from Wilbur Wright Middle School for their participation and showing up for the Schooltown of Munster and showing what stars we have.
Thank you very much. Director of Operations Report, Mr. Begley.
Thank you. Right now, the big thing is getting projects wrapped up in design, out to bid, and prepared for spring break and summer 2023. The things that we really are working towards are refurbishing the classes in the north part of the high school, the theater lights at the high school, front parking lot, courtyard improvements at the high school, fire alarm replacement at the high school, hot and chilled water pump replacement at the high school, Eads and Elliott, we talked about that earlier today, the fence replacement, parking lot redesign at Frank Hammond, service center, parking lot improvements, and then the Wilbur Wright. We have a project for outside area improvements and then working on replacing all the carpeted areas in Eads and Elliott to get the, those changed out to improve the flooring there. Food service, we're in the process of doing request for proposal. I'm working with the IDOE, going through the myriad of paperwork to get that out to public bid. And we're working on the timeline with the Department of Ed and we're right on the glide path to get that done and bring towards you at the May school board meeting. Also with food service, one of the things Mr. Bellamy was always telling me to do is spend down the cash balance in food service. We have several projects that will be coming into bid or have already come into bid for work over the summer where we'll be improving the infrastructure in the high school, well, all the schools. We're looking at replacing the freezers at Wilbur Wright, the dish machine at Eads, the freezer, a couple freezers and cooler at the high school, the dish machine at Elliott and getting a new cooler for Elliott, Frank Hammond walk-in freezer, Frank Hammond dish machine, and replacing the serving lines at Frank Hammond and at Elliott. And then also retile the, the high, high school cafeteria. In transportation, we are getting ready for our drug and alcohol inspection with the state police to make sure we're in compliance with that program. That'll be happening March 1st. And the bus replacement. Any questions? That completes my brief.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Begley? All right, so there's still stuff for you to do, there's still, you're still employed, there's still things going on.
There is, and if I could just add, one of the first things I got to do when I got here was work on this dais. And one of the things that, if you look right here, Schooltown of Munster logo, that was from Mr. Largus. And I got a chance to meet him and doing the design and that. So when you look at that, I think you can think of Mr. Largus. And, and just in the short time I got to know him, it took me about 10 seconds to realize that he loved the Schooltown of Munster and dedicated a huge point of his life towards this, to the school. And we're very lucky to have had him on our team. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to this month's principal's report. Once again, voice of an angel.
Guys are sick of me, hopefully.
No, voice of an angel, Mr. Nolan, let's hear it.
Before I let these gentlemen actually steal the show, I want to make a couple other highlights. Big shout out, if you don't follow us on social media, get on Facebook, follow us. Big shout out for Jordan Mayer who won the Golden Apple Award at the Minnesota, the Minneapolis Speech Tournament. So that's like the highest award for that tournament. The Minneapolis Speech Tournament's a big Midwest tournament, so that was a big honor for him. And then another big honor for our theatrical arts program, going out to the Munster Theater Corporation for getting second in state, that's their highest place ever with their performance of wit. So those kids did a phenomenal job. Now I'm going to turn it over to these three gentlemen and just, I'll preface, because we've spent so much time on, and that bill got really big for Mr. Melby for insurance, on cybersecurity stuff, I thought I'd bring in the good guys on our cybersecurity side. But to show you guys, when we talk about pathways, some of the opportunities students have at Munster High School to explore career opportunities that were not there when you were in school, Mr. Castro, for sure. But not, not, I mean, even five years ago, we didn't have these opportunities. So this is a really neat program, and I'll have these guys come on up here and show it off.
They can fix it, yeah. If it doesn't work, they'll fix it.
Hi. So we made a small presentation and video to accompany the Cyber Patriot Club that we run here at Munster. All three of us helped manage and run all the new kids that go in there. And it'll explain what we do, how we do it, and how we want to assess for the future. So currently, Munster as a school was placed 86th for the Platinum Division semifinals competition. So that puts us at around the .1% of all schools in the nation, which includes also ROTC facilities and international military bases that accompany Cyber Patriot. Munster High School has eighteen, has six teams, but of those six teams, three made it past the state round and into the semifinals, which would have qualified us for nationals if we scored high enough. And of those six teams, the 32 subsequent members all placed within the silver, gold, and platinum divisions of the Cyber Patriot competition.
Anthony Bowleson, I'm the president of the Cyber Patriot Club. For science and cybersecurity.
I'm Ivan Mittelberger. I'm the vice president for the club. I'm a junior at Munster High School, and I'd also like to pursue computer science and cybersecurity.
I am Stephen Glombicki. I am a, I'm the vice president and I'm a sophomore at Munster High School.
Here we have this video prepared for you and then.
So then, what is Cyber Patriot? Cyber Patriot is a series of three arguments. Is Cyber Patriot friendly to new students?
Is Cyber Patriot's skills used by students?
There are multiple directly applicable skills that students can expect to pick up. The Air Force Association has strictly constructed Cyber Patriots to focus on two primary concepts, a no-tolerance defense-only approach to cybersecurity and a great stress on ethics. This coupling of goals leads Cyber Patriot students to fix existing problems, prevent further issues, and eventually predict future vulnerability.
Does Cyber Patriot teach any soft skills?
Yes. Cyber Patriots design limits teams to five members. Despite having four unique challenges with only six hours to complete as many problems as possible, the sometimes overwhelming amount of work coupled with the anonymity of challenges means teams are forced to prepare for broad scenarios, but above all else, improve their collective cohesion. Alongside teamwork, Cyber Patriot guides students to improve their communication, timing, resource management, problem solving, and game time decision-making skills, laying the foundation for building these unconscious habits benefits both the students and their future teammates.
So then, what is the big deal with cybersecurity?
Surprisingly, across all market predictions, cybersecurity as an industry is expected to grow exponentially. The Bureau of Labor Statistics predicted a 35% increase in job opportunities. Cybersecurity might soon be regarded as the nursing of computer science. Now in sight, this makes sense. Essentially, every business, largest mall needs preventative measures. As the old adage goes, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And that's where we reside in clubs like Cyber Patriot, because in reality, the world will need thousands of moral skilled prospects, but cybersecurity isn't exactly a popular hobby for high schoolers to pick up.
Aside from thirty-four million benefits, what else makes Cyber Patriot special?
Cyber Patriot sits in an oddball place of the school's clubs. You notice that not all, but a significant portion of participating students choose Cyber Patriot as their one and only club. There are, of course, different reasons for different people, but one common denominator seems to be the balance Cyber Patriot strikes with so many students. Cyber Patriot's challenging nature while maintaining creative freedom on top of being one of only a handful of computer-related clubs seems to sit in a kodylock zone that attracts students. In addition, the area career centers' computer internships mesh with Cyber Patriot competitions very well. A prime example is Dylan Murph, now rated MVP of this year's Cyber Patriot Club. This was Dylan's first year and he had no proprietary knowledge of Cyber Patriot. He simply attended the Cisco training at the ACC and surprised us all after essentially carrying his team to semifinals competition.
What's the future then for Cyber Patriot?
What's we can expect? The simple concept of supply and demand will dictate. What might have been issued will order to be countermeasures to prevent these students from thinking well. Here's where Cyber Patriot fits into the puzzle. Defense-only training, Cyber Patriot can build positive habits partnered with strong ethic, which happens to be exactly what we strive to do.
Thank you for your time for that and.
So then, what is.
Oh. Do you have any questions for us that we could possibly answer?
What do you guys have for these gentlemen about Cyber Patriot?
Is this your first year as a club or did you do this last year?
This is our second year as a club. So we're still figuring things out, but we've gone quite, quite a bit away since our first year.
Sounds like you guys are finding some good success. Are you, do you feel like there's some momentum building and into next year that there's going to be even more interest and more members coming onboard?
Most definitely. We are expanding our resources and training materials that we can self-host for students. Cyber Patriot itself offers a baseline amount of how to teach students what to do and how to do it, but we think that being able to teach students on a personal level and being able to understand their learning process and then accompanying for that will only make the club better. So I, myself, and Steven are going to be working very hard on that.
Any other questions?
Very impressive.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just, I'll highlight, those, those three guys are awesome. And again, I didn't know a lot about Cyber Patriot. It wasn't there when I went to the middle school and now that I've come back to the high school, so I'm exploring and learning the program as well. And we're, we're looking to pair with some of the local universities in the area to try to build and possibly looking at expanding our Cyber Patriot program, but also our cybersecurity education program at the high school since it's such a growing area, there's a lot of student interest in that. So obviously, the demand for morally competent people to protect the United States from enemies interior and exterior is vital to our success and hopefully Munster High School will be a part of that in the future. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nolan.
If I could, I just want to say, I had a little bit of a chance to spend some time with Steven Glombicki earlier this year and as a group.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nolan.
If I could, I just want to say, um I had a little bit of a chance to spend some time with Stephen Glombicki earlier this year, and uh as a group, uh I think we're in good hands. In fact, we were just kinda whispering, we might just, if, could we just offer all three of them jobs now? Because, because cybersecurity is a growing issue in K-12, if you haven't heard, uh and uh we could use some, from some guys like them. Thank you.
Awesome. Alright, uh moving on to general public comments, uh we have two individual public comments. The first, uh Ms. Christine Fortner, you can come up to the microphone, please.
Thank you. Um I'm Christine Fortner. I have a daughter who's a Munster graduate and a current seventh grader at Wilbur Wright. Um I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I did want to talk about um the high ability honors move to AP. Um of course, there was a lot of discussion tonight, so I changed a little bit of uh of my comments, but um specifically, seventh grade kids in honors, ELA, science, and math today. Um these kids have been, when they came into middle school for s- for all these classes, the uh standards were ninety-seven percent in view, ninety-six percent NEWA, or a ninety-five percent on their NEWA, two tests in a row with some additional testing. So um the standards were pretty high, and in specific to math, this group of kids had to take um double-block math in sixth grade, um and now they're in seventh grade honors, and the, it really seems to have benefited them, at least some of the kids that I know, because they're scoring very high in their NEWAs now. So um it seems, uh it's a little difficult to understand how these kids will integrate with kids that are scoring in a seventy-five percentile or higher. Um they've been working so hard in all three subjects. I think the classes are very rigorous, um and you know, what do we do if these kids aren't challenged next year? Because they can't um, they can't accelerate, because they have to take algebra and they have to take biology. So there's really no room for them to accelerate anymore. Um you know, one suggestion I would make is that potentially if uh for their AP class, that that group of students stay together and finish their whole high ability career that they've been on since second grade with the current kids and the classes they've been taking, and have them all in the same AP class. Um I've seen these kids in action, they're pretty, they've been pushed since second grade, so um other than that, that's all I really wanted to say. Just a perspective from a parent that has a child in honors for all three. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, we have Mr. Luke Solczewski. Uh please come up and have your comment.
Um thank you again for the opportunity to speak. Um my comment just has to really revolve around the whole idea of public comments, and we've, I've talked in the past about, you know, having people have to give their address, or even putting it on forums so people think they have to give their address, putting it in the rules of the meeting and the agenda that you have to give your address. Uh one where you just start telling people, if you wanna make a comment, you know, give us your name and and give us your comments, 'cause I would hope you welcome people's comments, but you know, there are many people in the community that would not feel comfortable giving their home address just to be able to speak at their local school board meeting. So um I hope that maybe by next meeting, we can have that, and if not, you know, we can um pursue further options on that. But you know, I think with the current state law from last year and everything, you know, it's pretty clear that, you know, any member of the public can speak, and you know, requiring someone to give their address, or even, you know, any of that personal information just seems to be like a barrier, like you're trying to stop people from wanting to give public comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Alright, uh those were the only two public comments. Thank you very much for participating. Uh moving on to individual board member reports, um we will start with Mr. Dempsey.
Last month, last month was my first meeting with the the PTO presidents, and we uh all the schools, all the three elementary schools are uh getting ready or or have done um their fun fairs, one school, one book, um were a couple of the highlights, and then um Wilbur Wright, which I did not know was was uh introducing or it going through some, a concept plan with respect to just outside of the um uh the cafeteria right by the basketball courts, and just exploring some options on how to to better use that space. Um and so tho- those were the highlights with for the, for the meeting. Um I want to piggyback one thing that Mr. Trippenfelder said about uh about Coach Largus. You, when I was, and I, I could speak on behalf of a thousand football players that that uh that played for him, and I can't think of another coach in any sport that I, that I played in of someone that was feared, loved, and respected all at the same time, and and that was Tom Largus. And when you, if you played football in in middle school and you were going into high school, you weren't worried about the the rigors of high school, you were more worried about seeing him on on the the football field. And if, if it was a question on who you'd rather not disappoint, your, your, your parents or or Coach Largus, it was, it was an argument. Um but he was a giant and did a heck of a lot for the town of Munster that that no one would know, because he didn't want anybody to know. And I think that goes to say so much about his character.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. Um Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. I was sworn in last month as the new park board representative on behalf of the school board, so I attended my first meeting last month, and the Parks Department Director gave a annual report and a look forward as to what his plans were for twenty-twenty-three, um which included maintenance of some of our parks, potential expansion, and looking at some conceptual ideas that have been discussed for many years around um kind of the coffee table about new ideas for Munster Parks. So um I'm looking forward to attending my next meeting, which will be next week, on behalf of the school board and learning more about my role. Um I also do want to mention too about Mr. Largus. Um many of you, he did a lot of things quietly, and for many years as a PTO president, um the very first time somebody said, we need signs, somebody needs to go call Largus, I'm like, oh, I'll go, I'll go call Largus. I did not know who Largus was, um and when I called Tom, he said, can you come in and meet with me? So I said, sure, and I walked into his office and I sat down, and this man comes into the office, and I'm like, wow, he's a tall man. And I was just like bigger than life, big voice, very gregarious, very warm and welcoming. And I asked him for the sun, the stars, and the moons, and then he said to me, how much money do you have? And I said, none. And he goes, no problem, we can work with that. And he was beyond generous to every PTO, to every event that we ever asked him for. Anything and everything he could do, he went above and beyond to give um to all of us and with nothing in return, and just with absolute kindness in dealing with all of us. So um that I will remember. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Smith. Mr. Doherty?
I had the pleasure of uh being a, a community reader with, there were other school board members there, but at at Eads on January seventeenth, I just want to thank everybody that turned out for, what, what a great event. Um and then on February third, I was able to attend our Jeans and Jerseys fundraiser. Uh MEF put together a, a great program as always, and how fortunate we are to have the Munster Education Foundation doing fundraisers like this, and and just a great time. Uh I've attended a number of our boys and girls' basketball games. Credit goes to all our players and coaches, uh on, on another exciting season. The boys are still playing. And congratulations to the girls' swim team. We have a swim team parent here at the, right up here on the school board, and a number of athletes uh placed in the state. Uh the final thing I want to talk about is Tom. I'm sorry for this, but for thirty-three years, he was the dearest friend. And those of you who don't know him or didn't know him, I will never know what, he was the glue of this school district. And uh we'll, we'll miss him always. Thirty-three years of devotion, he loved the School Town of Munster, and uh I know the School Town of Munster loved him back. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Uh Dr. Schwartzwolf?
That was very nice, John. Um I also was a community reader at Eads and got to do kindergarten this year, which I always give the older kids. I love all the kids, but the kindergarteners are just never know what's gonna come out of their mouth, so entertaining. Um also, uh the Strategic Planning Committee, I'm on that, and as we, everyone mentioned previously, we're working on Portrait of a Graduate. The community member meeting will be on February twenty-eighth. Uh we have some of the, we tried to find non-parents of um of different groups, so we have people representing the military, labor, unions, uh town council, business owners, uh religions, as many different types of people we could get to give us their, be part of a focus group to help us identify characteristics and traits that we're looking for in our, our graduates. Um I would also like to wish uh Mr. Castro a happy birthday. It is his birthday today, and he's spending it here. Um and then I, I won't go on about Tom Largus, but I also did know him well, and I thought you were gonna say when you went into his office that two hours later, he came out of his, because that man can talk, that, he was just great. And then I want to thank the Munster High School um Alumni Association, because Tom was a recipient of the Alumni Award this past fall, and he had a permagren on his face that day. He was so proud to be in this Hall of Fame, and he had to get to a football game, but he got up to make his speech, and he thanked everybody, and just the joy he felt. So I'm so glad that that little bit of something that we could give back to him, which is nothing in comparison to what he gave us, but I know it brought him great joy. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schwartzwolf. Um for my part, uh unfortunately, I was unable to attend the last IDEA meeting. Um I will be following up with Mr. Ivanovich for a little bit more of a deep dive, but uh such a great, such a great organization, and and to see where that has come, and and I've, I've said this before, it's, it's not just checking boxes for some, some club to talk about minority stuff. Very passionate, very involved in trying to be creative and think about how this can affect our schools, our school community. Um so it's, you guys are doing fantastic work, and I'm, I'm very proud and honored to be a part of it. Um I also had the opportunity to attend Jeans and Jerseys, uh fantastic event. It's grown, it's, it's fun to see it after your, a couple tough years of COVID. Um a lot of people in attendance uh having a great time, so thank you for everybody who was there. Um you know, just, just seeing that room full of people, and and again, that's about giving to the community and the donations, and you see the donations here every month, and I just can't thank the community enough for, for all that they do. Um you know, I see, I see a lot of passion in our community um through guys like, like Tom, through, through shared experiences here. Um you know, I'm, I'm so sorry for your guys' loss. I, I knew Mr. Largus, but not, not to the depth that these guys had as friend, as coach, as mentor, as, as coworker. Um and just, just a huge loss for the community. Uh a- as Mrs. Smith was saying, helped with, with signage, with donations, with, with anything he could, um just to be there, just to be a part of it. So he will be sorely missed. Um oh, my, my piece of business, the uh Redevelopment Commission, I did attend the meeting, and as usual, not, not much to uh report from there. Um I do want to thank the students that are all here, bad pool kids. This was a, this was a long one, so sorry for that, but uh way to go, way to hang in there. So, nice job.
It's hot in here.
It's hot, it's uh, yeah. But uh no, just, just the passion, even, even the, the from, from the public comments, from the discussion, from the thought that we're all putting into just continuing to, to find ways to improve our district, our kids, our community. So it's just, it's just awesome. I'm so, I'm so proud to be a part of this. I know change can be hard, change can be scary, but, but everybody's putting so much thought and, and, and care into, into how to, how we handle this to ultimately make ourselves a better district. So um that is all I have. Uh thank you very much. We will now move to superintendent's report, Mr. Heller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'll start off, and I, I think I can't get out of the seat without at least saying a few words about Mr. Largus. Um I haven't known him nearly as long as most of you. Um but if you would see interactions between the two of us, you would never know it, because he made you feel like you've known him your entire life. And he definitely did that with me from the very first time I met him, and he was always, let me know whatever I can do for School Town of Munster, whatever you need, I will do it. And uh Mr. Dempsey used the word a giant, and that was the best word I could think of as far as who he is. He's a giant in terms of his size, but also in terms of his, his importance to this, this community and this school district. So um he will be greatly missed, and I, we will, uh, we have some other things in discussion about what we, how we can maybe honor Mr. Largus going forward. Uh the IDEA group, uh I'm just gonna echo what Mrs. Sivikovich said, our kids were, they were the show, they were the, the stars of the show uh the other day at the uh Chamber of Commerce meeting. Lots of adults stood up and asked questions of the guest speaker. None of them asked questions nearly as good as the ones that were asked by our kids, and none of them asked them in a way that was nearly as well-spoken as our kids. So once again, they made us proud as they always do. Mr. Begley, uh you, you talk about being an expert on chillers and boilers. I'm not. That's what Mr. Begley's job is. Um and he lists a lot of jobs that are not super exciting things, right? There's the list of things that he's, he's looking to replace that cost a lot of money. They're not always the exciting things until they don't work. Uh when the chillers and the boilers don't work, then everybody's really excited. And so um just appreciate the amount of time, effort, and attention to detail he puts into the, the long list of projects that he's balancing. I do have to uh call out our president for referring to Mr. Nolan as the voice of an angel. I have never heard that expression, especially tied to Mr. Nolan. So um Munster High students, you're welcome to use that in the hallways tomorrow if you'd like.
Uh.
Uh Counselors Week was last week. We want to thank, say thank you to our counselors across the district who do so many different things to meet the needs of our kids. I was a community reader at Elliott today. I had kindergarteners. I have a group of third graders I'm reading to tomorrow. Um vastly different experiences between kindergarten and third grade, but uh so much fun to do that opportunity. Uh Dr. Schwartzwolf mentioned the Portrait of a Graduate, as uh did our instructional coach, Tammy Doherty. Uh we are ha- hot and heavy in the middle of Portrait of a Graduate work. We've been doing focus groups with staff. Uh we did a high school focus group with students last week, uh which was very insightful. Those kids provided such great input. Um our district staff, um this Wednesday. We have elementary parents next Thursday, as well as middle school students next Thursday. We have a community stakeholders group on February twenty-eighth, secondary parents on March eighth, and we have surveys that will, we start going out hopefully by early next week to staff, students, and parents to give all stakeholders a chance on the survey to give input into the Portrait of a Graduate. So plenty of work over the next uh month and a half towards that uh Portrait of a Graduate. Hopefully, before the end of the year, we have all that ready to go and ha- up for the board for approval. Thank you, that's all.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir. Alright, moving on to announcements. Future meetings, February twenty-seventh, uh we have a planned work session at six PM, uh a tentative executive session, time TBD, and a tentative special board meeting, time TBD. March thirteenth, our regular school board meeting at six PM, and that is all for announcements. Uh we are now moving to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Schwartzwolf, so moved?
Dempsey's second.
All those in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.